Council meeting to order. I would have a roll call, please.
Uh, Ken Collier, Collier's assassin, Craig Koocham.
Here.
Matt Dyer.
Here.
Tyler Follenkamp's assassin, Wiley Ser.
Here.
I'd invite everyone to rise and join in the pledge of allegiance, please.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You were all emailed a copy of our minutes from the December 20th meeting. Do I have any additions or corrections to the minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Second. Wiley, motion, Matt seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed the same, thank you. We have a very small agenda tonight. Get you all home to watch the second half of the IU basketball game easily. Yep.
There were fourteen men up right out of the chute.
Oh, my. And then again, yeah, maybe we ought to take our time. P'ali. Mary Byers graciously consented to give us a report on the North Adams Arts Council, who is housed in the old police station down on Third Street. Thank you, Mary. If you would, just maybe tell us what they've been doing.
Well, we have a few things that not many people are aware of that I'd like to bring to the attention of the council. We host wine and canvas events, sometimes on canvas. They're called the Vine Arts. We can't use the wine and canvas name, but through the Arts Council, it's called the Vine Arts, and there's a large subject area that can be covered. If we were to go out, you can contact the Arts Council, and we can go out and also do parties in local watering holes, and those are kind of more fun and maybe a rowdy your crowd. We call those the Lushes with Brushes. At the Arts Council, we also have birthday parties available. You can come and rent a room and have projects that would be done on site with cake and ice cream, and it's a case-by-case basis of what you'd like at your party and what crafts and art projects that you would like to have completed. Those are also good for bachelorette parties and baby showers. We host a wide variety of events. We have open paint night every Monday at 6:30. It's $5 for non-members and $2 for members.
And it's open what?
Open paint night, where you can come in, bring some supplies, and hang out with other artists, and receive critique and encouragement, and just talk and have a good time with other artists in the area. It's a nice networking opportunity. Some of our classes, we have performing arts classes for kindergarten through eighth graders. That's on our roster right now, but throughout the year, we've provided basket weaving classes, silk scarf dyeing, there's fairy gardens. Our curriculum changes constantly because our teachers are all volunteer. They come in and they bring their skill sets, and we're always looking for more instructors with different, you know, skills that they would like to share with the community. We keep our class prices low. We do require a preregistration online on our website. It makes it easier for the instructors to purchase materials, because some of the materials that we have are specialty, and we are always looking for more teachers. The people that we have on board now are all educators or mothers. Some don't have an art background, but they do have a craft or skill that they do want to share with the community, which I think makes for a nice grounded curriculum for the Arts Council. We're also looking for volunteers and board members. You don't have to have any background experience in the arts. You just need to be enthusiastic about the community or helping out in any way. We'd love to have anybody on board. You can check our website or contact us on Facebook if you're interested in volunteering or joining the board. We have a fundraiser once a year in the spring or on Mother's Day. It is the Mad Hatter's Tea Party, and we are anticipating that will be a big fun event again this year, and we're moving forward.
How often are you doing those Divine Arts that you call it?
Those are, if people contact us, say, not-for-profit organizations want to do a fundraiser, or a business would like to have a team building, you know, something to do, to team build, they call, contact us, and there's several instructors to choose from, and it's.
That's where they all come in and they all paint something that's similar, or is that right?
Yes, they'll paint something that is similar. Many of our instructors, I know when I teach those, I encourage them to change them up because nobody wants to go home and not like what they paint. You know, you don't want to stay. It's designed, the perfect closet to hang this in. I want them to be happy once they're, if artwork were there, but I don't know if it's.
Like my eagle.
Do you have any questions, or?
I don't think so. Anybody have questions for Mary?
How many classes did you have last year? How many people did you serve? Did you have enrolled?
I believe through our doors, we had, I know that the way our classes are set up on our website, we don't know exactly how many people are reregistering. We have a list, but we haven't gone through it. We have had thirty members last year, but I would say 500 people have gone through the door this year. We do have repeat classes as well. For example, the performing arts classes, those, you can sign up in advance. It's not each class, so they continually come throughout two-month period of time. So, I can get you those numbers, though.
I was just interested to see, like, how many classes you did and the number of kiddos or adults you did grow, and so.
So you have enough funding coming through that you're able to self-sustain at this point?
We are, like I said, we are volunteer basis, and I, there's, arts aren't necessarily a money-making endeavor, so we are paying our bills and working our way there.
The building's working out real good for you?
Yes, it is. We really are enjoying the building. I think the new conditioner is wonderful, and, um, so thank you.
Okay. Any other questions for Mary? I'm encouraged to hear that 500 people have participated. That's great. Mm-hmm. Yeah, I see people coming and going down there all the time. I just live down the street, and it's, I don't hear any sirens leaving there like I used to.
Not.
Now you do.
No, they've been good neighbors.
Not so bad, though, is it?
No, they've been good neighbors.
Yeah, yeah. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tim, you want to join us? Next thing is the, was it a resolution that, on the wheel tax that the county did?
County. County. It's an ordinance, okay.
Just making this a matter of record, that the county council adopted an ordinance for the wheel tax that's being implemented that actually won't take effect until year 2018, January 1st, 2018, and I think it's been in the media quite a bit, and I'm not going to try to cover how much the charges are. If anybody has any questions, you can see me afterwards, but I just.
We just want to make it a matter of.
We just want to make it a matter of record that they sent, they notified the city that they have passed this ordinance.
And just to clarify that, because they control the vote, they have a majority vote, their adoption alone passes the wheel tax. We have a right, if we wish, to act ourselves, but it's kind of a fruitless exercise, so.
And not that I'm suggesting this, can the city put its wheel tax out there?
If the city has a certain population, I believe it's over 10,000, then the city could have the wheel taxed if it wished.
And I'm not suggesting that, but just for information.
Yeah.
Okay.
Need to grow.
Yeah, yeah, but we're not far from that.
Nope, we're far. I know Fort Wayne did. We wouldn't want to, but.
Yeah, that's right.
Fort Wayne City did do their own on top of the county.
Yeah, but I didn't know if that was a difference, so it is the population that.
Right.
I'll make a motion that this is a matter of record, that we've received notification.
Wiley made that a motion, and.
Second.
Craig seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed the same, thank you. Next is to announce the reorganization of the Plan Commission. A few years ago, we hired Nate Roomslugg. He was a civil engineer and was on staff at the city, and state statute says if you have a, a civil engineer on staff, that your Plan Commission, it needs to be a nine-member commission. So we added Nate to the board, as well as Larry Ish, who was appointed by way of the Park Board, and that's the way we operated up through today. And now that we don't have a city engineer on staff, we had to kind of ask ourselves the question and find out from legal counsel, whatever, if we have, when we hire someone, and even if we just call them an engineer, if they're not an engineer, if we still retain nine people, and we've kind of, kind of come to the conclusion that, no, we don't. So we are at the point where we needed to basically ask everyone on our Plan Commission, this afternoon they met, to resign, and then reorganize as a seven-member board again, not a nine-member board. So all seven members are willing to stay on. Larry is going to be booted off, and I don't mean to make it sound like he's being booted off, but that seat no longer will be part of the board, nor will the city engineer be part of the board, going back to the seven-member board. So tonight, at the Plan Commission, they all resigned, and the seven-member body is made up of five people that is appointed by the mayor, and then two others, one appointed by the Board of Works, which is Bill Carbock, and one appointed by city council, and you and the, last year had appointed Tyler as that member. So I want to make a matter of record that the five mayor appointments are all going to be retained, and I'll sign those papers, so that at the next Plan Commission meeting, two weeks from today, they can reorganize their officers. And then, secondly, I can't really appoint Bill from the Board of Works tonight because I would be the only voting member here, so I can't do that. You can reappoint Tyler, since there are three of you here, so for starters, let me reappoint, am I okay here so far, Tim? Let me, said I will be reappointing the sitting members. Barb, help me out, it would be you, Barb Engle, Steve Hakes.
Jack Macklin.
Jack Macklin, Greg Kitson, and Dennis Shimon are all the members that would be mayor's appointments. So if I could make that a matter of record.
So move.
Motion from Matt, a second from Wiley, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed the same. And then, secondly, if one of you would want to make a motion to. I'll make a motion to make Tyler Follenkamp.
And I'll second that.
A motion from Craig, and a second from Wiley to retain Tyler as a member of the Plan Commission as a council member. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed the same. And then, Bill? We'll get you appointed here, here at the quorum. Yeah, probably two weeks from tonight when we have quorum. And like I told Bill, now he can attend that meeting, and they can't appoint him as an officer. He can officially be part of it.
And if I can add one thing, it sounds like we're jumping through a bunch of hoops. Why didn't we just terminate Larry's position, keep everybody in place? The reason for that is that the appointments are different when you have a nine-member body versus a seven-member body. So you have to do this in order for the body to be properly constituted, and the reason that's important is if there were ever a challenge to a decision made by the Plan Commission in court, that could prove to be a problem, so you want to make sure that it's correct.
In addition to those appointments, I also want to make a matter of record that this evening I am appointing Sharon Gatchel to the Decatur Housing Authority for a term beginning on January 1st, 2017, terminating December 31st, 2018, a one-year appointment. If I could have someone make that a matter of record?
So move.
Second. Wiley and Craig on that one.
Sandy came, referred to me by way of Jack Macklin, who's president of the, or chairperson of the Housing Authority.
Sorry, that, she was recommended by Jack?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. We have to have one member on the Decatur Housing Authority that comes from the voucher program itself.
Okay.
And she would be that member.
Okay. So. January 1st, 17, to December 31st, 18. Yeah, so it is a two-year term, I'm sorry. Okay, so I had a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed the same. Phyllis, reserve, one other one that you wanted me to do tonight, or was that it?
Sharon.
Sharon Brown. Also appointing Sharon Brown, who's worked for Roger forever, and pretty much been his assistant, but just hasn't officially had the title of Assistant Building and Zoning Superintendent, and she is officially going to assume that title starting today. If I could get that as a matter of record.
So move.
Matt motions, and Wiley seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed the same. And that concludes the actual business of the, of the meeting. Mayor's report, I will only, again, tonight, sit here after the last four or five days with semi-traffic in Decatur. The semis are trying to get the best of me, but we're not, we're not going to let that We're doing everything we can to keep semis out of the Stratton subdivision, also asking for residents that live east of Decatur and Anthony Wayne, Lake Shores, Waters Edge, out that way, to use the alternate routes, including Og Street and/or Pickwa Road, Andor County Road 200, if you live out far enough, to come into Jackson Street, or if you want to come in East Monroe Street and take Og Street over to North Adams Drive, to Jackson Street. Yes, it is okay, and it is lawful to come in East Monroe and cut through Stratton, and I understand that for the sake of time, sometimes people are going to need to do that, but I also encourage the homeowners living out east to be respectful to the residents of Stratton, especially those on Harvester Lane, and when you do travel Harvester Lane and Stratton Way and Limberloch Trail, to please be respectful and stay below the speed limit. Jeremy, his, his crew has moved the barricades at the entrance to Stratton in an effort to keep semis out. That also makes it a little tougher for cars to navigate through there, so again, everyone really needs to be careful. Hopefully, once the coast is clear of semis going that way, which I think as long as semi-drivers use GPS, we're never going to be clear of it, because most of the drivers we've had wind up in there, it's because their GPS is not telling them exactly where to go, and they wind up in there. But hopefully, we can move those barricades back in time and, and just keep everybody safe. That's all we're after, so.
The barricades that were put out there over the weekend are also being used to somewhat slow the traffic down.
Right.
Instead of just flying through there, then you have to slow the way on traffic. I only have one complaint so far of the barricades being there, to explain to the individual that some of the problems we've had with, I don't know why you hit four down over the weekend, damage poles of the semis and such. Somewhat understood, but there's just a little frustration out there with traffic and such, so. Just a reminder, it is 25 to Stratton, 25 mile an hour, please. Like the mayor asks, pay the speed limit because you are, like, you're a housing mission where there's a lot of people that are out.
And they may just be being watched, right, Greg?
Yeah, I was just going to say, I would ask the public to please slow down. I know sometimes people think that the faster they go, the sooner they get through everything, and so I've noticed quite a bit coming over the ridge, going east on East Monroe Street, coming, going, or going.
Eastbound.
Yeah, going east on Monroe Street, and also going east on Jackson Street. They'll pick up speed, and please watch your speed.
Mm-hmm.
One thing, estimating did move in some apartment today, so it's hard to see, it's hard to see some destruction around.
Real soon here, yep. And once that construction starts, it's going to get hot and heavy, so.
You got to give word for it if the.
Yep, yep.
We can minimize if people will just.
Right, exactly. How about Dan, you got anything tonight?
Well, you have a stormwater rate increase that's going to start this month. It was voted on in 2015, it's a two-step increase, it's going to be a dollar per household. It starts on the next day in January, and hopefully, as we go up that stormwater count, we can get some projects done.
Okay. Yeah, definitely want to get some projects done. I know Bob would like to see some projects done over in his neighborhood, so.
We're operating.
Greg?
Just one thing for general information for the council, that down at the old PD, on the last inspection of the boiler, which was before the holidays, we have two stuck, or corroded, pressure valves, one on the water line and one on the water heater. Both are easy enough to fix, however, with the water heater, if I, if I remember correctly, I think it was 2007 when that water heater was installed, so I think I'm going to have another water heater installed. I should be able to cover that with my budget, so, particularly since it's the beginning of the year here, so.
Okay. And then, while we're on the subject of police, then tonight at the Board of Works meeting, we made it a matter of record that Austin Gross and Reed Arnold have both been appointed police officers. They've both been sworn in here in the last couple of weeks and are both on the job.
They're both on the job. Austin is actually out on his own, either his previous experience. Reed, he will be evaluated for a while. Bill Houston.
Yep.
But they're both new to the.
Yep. Austin comes to us by way of the Sheriff's Department, and has already been through the academy, and like it has been, like you said, it's been on the road. Reed Arnold comes from Osien, he was on the Osien Police Department, also been through the academy, and with.
But has not had that much on-road experience.
Right. And then, in addition to that, when council this past year gave, those two replaced Julie McConnell and Chris Affholder. So now, last year, we gave Greg the, the okay to extend his staff by one employee in 2017. He's in the process of hiring. They've been testing, and now they'll be starting their final interviews with maybe five or so candidates, and when they get done with that, then they'll bring it forward to the Board of Works and proceed the hiring process for the new addition to the staff, so.
Yes.
Do you get somebody lined up to go to the school system, or not?
Right now, Kevin.
Herbert?
Herbert is, is out there.
Okay.
He's replacing Chris, and today was actually his first day out there, so, yeah, it should work out.
Yep, yep. Roger?
Nothing this evening.
How about fire? Last, Jim?
I sent you an email earlier, P and H. You know how many of the elected officials are planning on Thursday night to VIP at the jail? They've sent out about, between 800 and 900 invitations, but, you know, that is an exclusive buy-in by VIP, and if they're kind of worried about some parking issues, so, you know, I don't know, I don't know if the elected officials may want, are going to attend Thursday, but if you can kind of group up and.
Carpool.
Not sure what they're going to use as an identifier, but if there's an elected official in the car, they're going to allow that east-side parking, you'll be right there. So, you know, if you're going to go out together, like, the white grazing is a, ceremony is at 4:30, so if you were planning on attending that, if you're going out on your own, but if you're going as a group, try to group together. If you do it Fleetwood, there is going to be a shuttle bus that's going to run from Fleetwood up to the jail, drop you off. Temperatures aren't supposed to be real conducive being outside Thursday, but they, so it'd be a pretty short ceremony and dedication and so on, for the press to know about that. Thursday night is private.
Family.
Yeah, Saturday, and Saturday is actually.
Public.
Public, but.
What are they using for the shuttle, a school bus or something, or?
Adam Central donated their little small bus they do with, like, bottles, and they're going to, they donated that, a first div of what county does for their SRO, and so that was their contribution. Mike, you guys, they're rocking and rolling. It's great. How's it happening?
Heath Follenkamp was sworn in a week and a half ago, something like that, and then Taylor Gage was sworn in.
October, and they fit like a glove.
Taylor replaced a person, and then Heath was your additional staff member, which we approved, increasing the staff by one for the fire department as well.
And he's, he's just working out great.
Good.
It's just been already finding that having that third person, that having a full staff every day, and, you know, Tim's going to be able to get out, you know, caught up on some inspections, and then have this guy start doing some rein inspections, so we're hoping with Scott being off so long, with the illness, and who's Greg, that Tim, Tim today was like, you know, I really need to get out here and get into some of these places that we just weren't able to get into this year, so. And the jail is kind of a big project for us to stay on top of, too, so hoping that that number will improve, but he still did over 90 inspections this year, but he'd like that to be up at 150, so he's set a goal for this year, but things are good.
Okay, thanks. Ann? Nothing from Ann. Mr. Carbock, you have anything back there tonight? Okay. Melissa? Melissa has nothing this evening, okay. Council members? Phyllis?
Well, GLGF, did they approve our budget?
Oh, good. Isn't that early this time around? Yeah.
Yeah, well, I think last year was December 17th, but they still got it in the very last day of the year, so.
Okay.
Their property tax and caps were a lot different than they anticipated, so that was a good thing. I have to call into them, so I'm going to double-check what they might be doing with these figures now, because I can change the budget still.
Yeah, yeah.
Within 10 days, so.
Good news. Okay. Chamber of Commerce will be having their annual State of the City address next Monday. Ken Meyer will be our guest speaker, who will give the State of the City. I just wanted to invite everyone to make sure that if you'd like to come, it's 15 bucks a plate, be out at Woodcrest, please join us. Anything else over here, Wiley? Tim, do you have anything this evening?
No.
Make a, do we include everybody that we would like to in the June 9th, January 9th meeting, you think? You want to mention something about that?
Sure, we do. Yeah, there's a meeting planned, June 9th, it's a Monday.
January.
Jan, January. Sorry. It's a Monday, 2 o'clock at the chamber. Purpose of the meeting is to gather as many folks that are able to attend to, for planning purposes of events that we'll have throughout the city during the entire year. We're wanting to get as many. We're wanting to get as many of those on calendar, and so that publicity and promotion, and also where it benefits, that we don't have overlapping or benefits each other, so that's again-
It's going to be Chamber of Commerce and Decatur Main Street-
Decatur Main Street.
Joint. Yeah, it'll be held at the Chamber of Commerce, 2 o'clock on-
Monday, January 9th.
Good. I'll still be speaking.
I hope not. No one will be in the audience.
Yeah, I guess I'll give you the key, Wiley. The key, I don't weave, okay.
I'm just kidding.
The public?
The, January 9th? Anyone- Well, we were just hoping that we touched all the groups.
Yeah.
Mary, would you, if you have something that you'd like to share with us from the Arts Council or-
Yeah.
We're just trying to make sure we touch everybody, that-
Organizations.
Anybody that has events going on next year, if you'd like to be a part of it, we're just doing a planning session between Main Street and the Chamber.
So any organization or groups throughout the city?
Yeah.
And even outside, within the county as well?
We, yeah. Just want to make sure that there's, if there's overlap, we can organize it, be organized. That's the whole idea.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay. I make a motion to pay the claims?
I'll second that motion.
Motion to second to sustain, because I think the chamber is in the claims.
Okay. Motion and a second to pay the claims, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed the same. And? Motion to close. Wait, Tim, you got something?
Um. If you extend, yeah, you don't have a majority.
We don't have a majority. Oh, to adjourn the meeting?
I mean-
To approve the claims.
But you don't have, you don't have two people.
We have to sustain because he isn't getting a check. It's not present personally.
It's to the chamber itself.
Would he have to? Because if that's the case, he should exclude himself from every claim, because there's almost a check for the chamber all the time.
Chamber all the time.
There is a difference with Tyler, because that's his person.
Yeah, I agree. I agree. Yeah. In this case, the conflict of interest goes to the individual specifically, not to the organization. So in your case, um-
And technically, you don't, the way the law reads, isn't it true that you don't really have to remove yourself? With conflict of interest?
If you've disclosed the conflict.
If you've disclosed, if you've-
But I think it's always the better practice.
I agree with that.
I think tonight, you better vote. Did I do the right thing, or?
Yeah, no, but-
I just want to make sure that they-
I understand. You know, I think it's the better way to do it. Otherwise, you're going to have to hold off approval of claims.
So what are we going to do?
So I would go ahead and vote tonight.
Okay, take a second.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed the same. Thank you.
If, if the money were coming to you, then you would have, basically, the alternative would be you could exclude any claims submitted by the chamber and approve those at a later meeting, and approve all other claims. So that's the other way you could do it.
Is that what you want to do? No. Don't worry about it.
No.
Okay. I promise there's no personal gain.
Yeah.
Okay. Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Have a motion and a second to adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed the same. We are adjourned. Thank you.